Okay. The August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Manchester Planning and Zoning Commission will now come to order. First item on the agenda is the review and approval of the May twenty-third minutes. Everybody should have a copy of the minutes in front of them. Can you take a moment to take a look at them, see if there are any changes or corrections that need to be made?
I make motion to approve the minutes as written.
There's a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next. Michelle?
Okay. We do have a BZI case coming up this month. It's for, it's gonna be held August thirtieth here at seven o'clock, and it's for a grandfathered conditional use in the R seventy-five hundred for Smithy's Automotive who would like to get approval to put an addition on the rear of their building for three additional bays in the back. The council received a written request from Patriots Overlook to amend their annexation agreement and remove the clustering from there, and the council took a vote and decided to let it remain as is. So they will not be clustering. And the grading has begun on lot forty-six of Hallie Hill. I don't know if you remember, there was one lot left over there that was to be turned into three. So if you see or have heard, it's begun grading, and they're getting ready to develop those three lots. And Premier Dental, there's packet in your, in your packet is their plans. They are plans for an addition to the rear of their building also.
Oh, good.
And a pre-submital meeting was held August third with the engineers, the county, myself, Alex. And this is a site plan, so it just gets preliminary and final, so we'll wait until we see what some things come from the county. And that's all I have for you.
Alex, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner. I just have a couple of things for you. The contract for the new wastewater treatment plant, E and R upgrade, design and engineering, has been signed by the mayor, and we had our kickoff meeting this week. So there are a lot of things that will be going through over the next couple of months. Forty years' worth of upgrades, takes some design, but it'll get there. Along with that, in the stormwater management portion, the county is diligently working on Manchester East, which is the stormwater management project down by the wastewater treatment plant. And they, and again, they've been gracious enough to add the west side of the town on the other side of Main Street where we've had some serious conditions with running water, and that'll all be incorporated into this wastewater, I'm sorry, into the stormwater management group over there. The interesting piece why these two I put together, whatever happens in the size of this stormwater management project will probably also include the wastewater treatment plant. So there'll have to be major stormwater upgrades, and that was the bulk of our discussion during the kickoff meeting the other day. The town did suffer some fair damage from the storm the other night. We, the staff, excuse me, did a great job of getting Christmas Tree Park back in order for the last weekend. They're gonna start down at Charlotte's Quest tomorrow trying to clear those trails, and we did lose the roof to the maintenance shed. It peeled back like an orange, and so we're getting that fixed and go from there. Staff is doing a great job, and everything else is going fairly well.
How's the water situation despite the fact that everybody around us seems to be getting monsoons every week? This, this part of Carroll, Southern York and Adams County are missing all the rain.
Yeah, we're still six to eight inches below on the last hydraulic report. I think the voluntary conservation, the residents of the town have done an outstanding job, so our wells are holding very well.
Good. Okay. Thank you, Dave. What is the timeline on the wastewater pump station upgrades?
Engineering and design and approval for, to go out to bid is thirteen months. So we're looking at putting it out to bid in the fall of twenty-four with construction to start as soon as possible afterwards, and then it'll, they're figuring sixteen to eighteen months' worth of construction till we actually flip on the switch and have a relatively new plant.
Reason I ask is stormwater management regulations will be changing, not for the smaller in the latter half of the twenties. So didn't want us to get caught in a situation where we were partway through a project. Thank you.
Yeah, we're hoping that CLSI is a subcontractor to CDM Smith specifically for that, and the fact that they're very familiar with Carroll's stormwater management requirements, so we're gonna hope all that goes.
The state is changing.
Great.
Chris, how are you?
I'm good. I was not at last Tuesday's meeting. I do know that they introduced the new cannabis ordinance that we're gonna talk about here shortly, so that was, that's, other than that, normal council business.
Okay. Thank you. County report. Andrew, how are you this evening?
I am well. How are you?
Well.
Good to see everyone. Just a very brief report regarding the county economic development and land use study. That study is getting close to completion. The draft portion, we're reviewing and getting back with comments to the consultant. Once that is ready, when staff has, basically when we have reviewed it and it looks good to go out for public review, it'll go first to the Planning and Zoning Commission, then we will give, so we'll give the Planning and Zoning Commission a short presentation, then we'll come back for a subsequent meeting to the Carroll County Planning and Zoning Commission for comments, and then after that, that would subsequently go to the Board of County Commissioners for review. But once the draft economic development and land use study is complete, we will put that on the county planning department webpage. If you go on the county, the main webpage for the county planning department, there is a, one of the, the main pop-ups is for the economic development and land use study, but I will also, when that is up, email Alex and Michelle to let them know that it's up for everybody to look at. But like I mentioned before, this is one of the two studies for the, that will help inform the Carroll County General Development Plan or Comprehensive Plan that will be starting here in the next year or two. But that's all I have. If you have any questions, I am here.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Okay, I guess the last item on the agenda this evening is the review and discussion of the cannabis ordinance that the council put forth at their last meeting. I don't know, Alex, if you're gonna make a presentation on that, or?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in front of you, you have the new ordinance that will be, that has been introduced by the, the council at the last council meeting. A couple of weeks ago, the mayor, Chief Hess, Michelle, and myself met together as a group, and we went through the fact that the state has passed the recreational use of cannabis law. There had been some license granted in the county for those to distribute recreational marijuana, and there were some other provisions in the law that Chief Hess was concerned about, specifically as it had to do with personal use and things along that line. So within that discussion, we discussed where and if someone came to the town and wanted to open up a business that would distribute, I think is the proper term, or offer recreational cannabis. Also, the hemp industry, I believe, is also getting licensed come October first, if I'm correct, to be able to distribute that. So we wanted to try to bring all that under one ordinance and make sure that we keep the town safe while not violating the state law with that. So some of the highlights of, of the ordinance, we were, we're very clear about how if a business person comes to the town and wants to offer a place for, to sell recreational cannabis, where it should go. We're very clear as well that we do not want any of these businesses within a thousand feet of a school, daycare, medical facility, things along that line. Yeah. We also talk in this, let's see, what else did we do? We talk about not being able to use it in the parks in general.
Correct.
Or on any public property owned by the town of Manchester.
I noticed that that part of the ordinance also included vaping and cigarette smoking.
That's correct. I mean, I, I, you know, unfortunately, some people still like to smoke or vape, and if that's their choice, that's fine, but we wanna be clear that we wanna have a smoke-free community, and that's not allowed on town property. So the other thing part as we were, like I said, about onsite consumption establishments was a, was a very important piece of that. We also wanted to make sure that we solidified the code so that there is no growing, manufacturing, distribution portion for recreational marijuana as well in town. We also didn't, we also talked a lot about the, the things that, like the gummies and those kind of baked goods, and we didn't want those things to be offered as a side piece in someone's business. They need to stay within the, the correct business. So I think the, the work group really did a great job of solidifying that and conveying our feelings to Tom, and as you see in front of you, you have the ordinance.
Yes, so we prohibited the onsite consumption establishments, which I think is a good thing to do, in my opinion, and, and the growing. I see individuals can grow, but it has to be out of sight, out of mind, and within the limits, two, two per household unless you have a medical license, you know, a medical card, you can go for.
Right.
But, yeah, I, I agreed with that as well. I, I actually, I reviewed this ordinance a couple of times, and I was actually, I thought it was a good, a good ordinance. The only question I had was, given the restrictions that were set up in the BG with the distance restrictions. Is there any place in town that can actually meet those requirements and, and sell?
We, I think, Michelle, we talked about the several small areas that are BG zone that are outside the Main Street or on the, on the edge of the Main Street area.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure because I don't know what the legality is if you legislate, you know, you, you put in restrictions that effectively prohibit, I guess it's legal, but...
It's permissible under state code.
Yeah. So I, I was just concerned, but it's a lo, you know, it doesn't sound like we've done that anyways, so I just...
I've got a few more questions that may change at previous, so.
Go ahead.
So my first question is, is the intent, when you say within a thousand feet of XYZ, that that is measured from the property line or from the building slash usage itself? Because in some cases, that will make quite a difference in where, where our radii lines go to.
My understanding is the way we were talking about, the state talked about it, the distance was measured...
From the property line.
From the property line.
That's how it's written in here.
It, well, it does not specifically say from the structure or from the property. It just says from A, which could be a dramatically different distance depending on how it's interpreted.
Yeah. You're right. No, it says here, the thousand feet buffer distance shall be measured as the shortest straight line distance from the property line of the proposed cannabis business to the, or hemp location to the property line of any of the locations listed above.
Okay, so I, I apologize if I missed that one.
Yeah.
Couple other uses that probably should be considered, based upon the ill-health effects that pets have received in other jurisdictions that have allowed marijuana, we may wanna consider from a veterinarian location. I would also question if we should include service organizations such as the Lions Club property, et cetera. Town offices slash facilities, museums, and cemeteries. Sometimes cemeteries are on a separate parcel from the religious institution. Does the intent of distribute include gifting, as in free with purchase, or a donation made? Is that included within the distribution?
So...
That's how they got around it in DC for a number of years.
Okay, so, well, I understand the district's a little different than Maryland, but I guess my question is, can you explain gifting?
Okay. So if I go into an establishment and I buy a hot dog, with my hot dog, I can get a free product?
Yes. That's exactly what, I'll find it for you, but that's exactly what we talked about. So I go into store X, I buy the super duper soup, and when I buy the super duper soup, I get a free brownie.
Right.
And with that brownie comes a little bit of magic.
Yep.
And that's exactly the type of issue we have that in there.
Gifting is referenced in here, but it's referenced between an adult and another adult, which I read to mean if I gave it to you, that was from a, so I did not read it as an establishment providing it.
That was our intent, but we will definitely go back and review to make sure that's tight.
Is the intent of the ordinance to include plants and their sub in whole and in part, meaning not just something that has been processed for use, but the plant as well, including seeds?
As a byproduct of, so from a personal standpoint, I don't believe we can regulate that as a person.
But from a business, selling or giving seeds...
So we're out long the whole, that whole, we're regulating, excuse me.
We're regulating it.
That whole piece, but we have to be careful not to, we can't supersede Maryland law.
Right.
So you can, you can do that if you get a waiver in a BG zone based on Maryland law.
The intent is in whole or in part?
It is any part of that business to grow or distribute or sell. You can do that in business general.
Okay.
Under a conditional approval.
Conditional approval, correct.
No bird seed has marijuana seeds in it.
We also said, we talked about no cannabis, we're using the term cannabis. In the definition of cannabis, we said any part of the plant.
Any part, but we don't say in whole.
All right, so we said including all derivatives, extractions, cannabinoids, hysterns, salts. Okay, so we need to add a little more to this definition is what we need.
I think so, that you, you just can't give them the whole plant or sell them the whole plant.
Right, or any part.
Right. Also, on page six where we define what it is, I will look to my environmental expert here, but I think we should probably also include any cultivar and not just the one specific genus that is mentioned.
Under what is that?
That's on page, it's page six of the PDF, so.
We have cannibary. We're talking about the different forms of cat.
The definition of cannabis.
Okay.
Okay.
Should include any cultivar and not just the genus that's mentioned here.
Right. Well, the cultivar would be the genus, but it would be a cultivar of the genus, so.
Yeah. I think there's...
So you're, can you explain to me the, what you mean by the cultivar?
So a, a subspecies that's created.
Right. They might breed, breed the plant, and they, they grow some of the plants, and they see one that grows taller than the other ones, and they isolate the genetic material out of that and determine that that wasn't just a fluke. It actually grows taller than the standard cannabis plant, so if that genetic trait can be reproduced, it can be assigned a cultivar, meaning it's...
A different name.
But if it has a THC level greater than point three percent, it's not, it really doesn't, the way I read that the cannabis or the regulation that we, that was written, I, I understand your point about the cultivar, and it's really interesting. However, the big picture is, does that still have THC in it?
Okay.
If it does, it falls under this regulation. So you're still talking about a plant.
I, I wouldn't read it that way, but I'm not a lawyer, so.
So...
I would, I would read it from this plant.
So that would be a derivative of the plant?
Right.
Okay. We'll ask Tom. I mean, that's really good, it's a really good point. I just was kinda curious.
Yeah, that might become a more of a, a, a technical question only because even though it's a cultivar, it's still sativa.
It's true.
It's sativa, and then they, in parentheses, list the name of the cultivar. So it's still the same species, it's just a variety of the species, so it probably doesn't need to change when I think about it.
Right, almost have a hole in there somewhere. And then, under F1, E is an echo. I assume that's supposed to be to ensure that those under twenty-one and not those?
I saw that, too.
That's all I got. I thi, I think it's very well crafted, but, you know, it's easy to...
No, I didn't think about some of those other zones you were talking about, which makes sense.
Other issues, yep.
We, we don't definitely want people standing out in front of the town office, even though it's a public place. We, you know, we don't want, have a facility within a thousand feet of our government office.
It's, it's easy to add on to someone else's already done work.
Yeah, yeah. Does anybody else on the...
So just...
Bob, just to answer your question, in page five of eight, two fifty dash seventy-four, where you talk about the following conditional issues required border authorizations, so again, you talk about the animal hospitals, veterinary clinics. Yes, that, the answer to your question would be, again, yes, it can go into a, it could, you could have, in a business general, a veterinary clinic take any plot of land that has more than one, enough land to handle two stores. So yes, under the code, you could have a veterinary clinic in a cannabis district or selling facility next door.
No, his concern... My concern was that other parts of the country have legalized are seeing an increase in illness of dogs specifically because they get discarded in and around, dogs consume them and get ill. We may wanna consider the buffer being included for veterinarian.
So you wanna take D and add it to that buffer?
I wanna add veterinarian to the list of...
Gotcha.
Of establishments that the thousand-foot buffer allows.
Okay. Now I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay, great, thank you.
Cemeteries, that might be on separate plots that are not, you know, on the same lot as the church might also be considered.
As well as the service organizations, yeah.
Did anyone take this to have any impact on the local pharmacy and album shop that sells CBD? Any impact on them? They're BL, not BG?
So in our discussion, I believe we were wondering if the owner, so the owner would not be able to, let me think, the pharmacy would not be able to sell CBD?
Well, according to this...
No, we see that as...
CBD falls under cannabis.
Yeah, but according to our zoning regulations, if you introduce, introduce a new ordinance and you change the zoning, the people that were there prior to the zoning are not affected. Their grandfather did. So unless something changes with him...
He's grandfathered, okay.
Yes.
Well, according to this, the CBD that's, that's being regulated is CBD that contains THC greater than point three percent. So what's on the market right now probably doesn't.
Yeah.
And so they can continue to sell the CBD as, as well as sheets.
Yeah.
What would happen if I walked to the town office today and I have a license in my hand from the state to sell marijuana on Main Street?
Today?
Today, without this ordinance.
Well, we'd have to, it would probably have to be a conditional use anyway because we don't have it in our county, so it's gonna have to be one of those other types of businesses that the board is...
So go to Board of Zoning Appeals and not this board?
They, they can recommend it to come to us, which they've done on other cases. The other one, I, I missed one of my comments. Should there be a provision for nuisance calls that revokes the license?
So I think we'd have to go back to the, the nuisance ordinance that Michelle put a lot of work into. We'd have to go back and reintroduce that into that ordinance. Boy, we got a lot of work to do tomorrow.
No, you wouldn't be, we're not given a license, are we? It's the state giving them the license, so we wouldn't be able to...
No, it's goes in, it would, it would, I think, Bob...
Nuisance ordinance, we kinda combined, we're working on combining nuisances and disorderly together, and indisorderly houses is calls for service and nuisance calls. So now we probably need to make sure that it doesn't just regulate residential, it's business also.
You're gonna close a business because they have, because they're a nuisance?
For calls for service?
Yeah.
We're not gonna close them, but they can be, they can be fined.
But it's, it's a conditional use that we're grant, that would be grant, if, if this passes, it would be a conditional use.
So you would, you would pull the conditional use?
You could pull the conditional use. I don't know if that's winnable.
I was reading the county, the church department, it is just getting ready to institute something like that because of service calls that take all their people away and they don't have enough.
Right.
We've made some recommendations.
I know, I got them. Now, based on these recommendations that you're, that you're given, are we gonna recommend that they proceed with the ordinance? There is a public hearing.
Tentatively scheduled.
Tentatively scheduled, September twelve.
What's the board's opinion on it? I, I, I have no issue with what Bob has recommended.
Has any other town passed an ordinance like this, to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge. I know that...
Is anybody working on it?
I assume so, everybody.
Big mountain. Mountain.
Mount Airy.
Mount Airy is, I believe. I don't, we, the only, there's two licenses in the county, to my knowledge, and they're both in Westminster, so I don't know have, I don't know how Westminster has seen.
Personally, I have concerns. And I would recommend to the council that they pump the brakes and do a little more research, 'cause it is a new law. You're dealing, you're also, by even allowing it, you know, and, and putting it into our, putting it on books here, the fact that the federal government is staying silent on this issue bothers me because then any time they can pop up and then we're in violation by even having something on the books that allows this, we're in violation of the federal statute on paper. So I, I, by putting it on paper, really, you know, I have that issue, actually, and, and I think they're, they need to do a lot more research and, and maybe get some precedent in how it's gonna stand up in court before we go ahead and do it, because we don't wanna be the first ones to go to court, being a small town like this, and the cost of defending it. We don't wanna be that guy, I don't think. So that would be my advice to the council.
So if I understand you correctly, your concern is with it being even allowed anywhere?
I, I have a problem with codifying it. If the, if the state of Maryland wants to codify it and put it on, you know, on paper, let them do it. And the fact that the, the federal government is silent on it because it's still illegal federally, I just, you know, I, I don't know what would happen if the federal government were to, to stop and, and say, wait a minute, we're gonna, we're gonna start enforcing it. Right now, it's selective enforcement, and...
I, I don't disagree with you in the least that grandmother has set of rules, and I'm not, personally, I don't know how the states have gotten away with what they've done, but they have. So Mama has told us that we're gonna let it happen, and I think, you know, I think we need to protect ourselves at some point in time. Now, I, I hear your point, and I agree with your point very well that... Now, I, I hear your point and I agree with your point very well that, you know, being the first one is always a risk. My opinion right now is that the risk of not having something is greater than the risk of having something and being challenged. I can, I can always rescind it if it comes to that, but.
Well, right now, if, if it were to happen, like I said, it would go to zoning appeals and it could be denied. So we have, we have something in place that would, would stop the, that, that from happening now. Their, their choice would be, you know, send it down here or go to Circuit Court. You know, um.
But the board of.
I like my odds in Circuit Court enforcing this, the way it's written in the code right now as a conditional use versus something like this if the feds got involved.
Our problem is, there's nothing in the code today.
Right, we don't have.
So the Board of Appeals has no statute to which to measure it against to deny it, so.
Right.
If you just straight out deny it, then you're opening yourself up.
To an arbitrary deny.
Right.
Because the code has nothing that specifically defines that industry in the town.
It would have to go to the state board of, state court circuit, which I wouldn't, I don't like my odds there. If I get to the federal level, that's a different story, but, um, yeah, I mean.
It's a quagmire.
Yeah. And I, I think the coun- the council needs to be well aware that, yeah, there's.
There's risk.
There's risks either side of, of this and, yeah.
I guess I'm still a little confused, like, is the risk the part where it's stated as a conditional use in something? Which is just that zoning portion of it, and you remove that, then the rest of it can stay in place? And if they come in and want a conditional, they come in and want to go to BZA for it, they at least have these guidelines of saying, okay, well, you can't be in a thousand feet of a, it can't be.
The question, I think, is, is, is it even legal to, to have a guideline for something that may or may not be permissible, but.
I think under state law it is, because it gives us, just like the solar.
Mother.
Just like the solar, we don't have, we don't have the right to zone it. We have to take what the Public Service Commission gives us. Here, the state, whether you agree with the law, depending on whether you're, which side of the apron you're on, I agree with you, I mean, Colorado's had it how long? I, I don't, I haven't seen either, either, the last two administrations, nobody's really gone into Colorado and cleaned it out. It has been selective enforcement and there's a lot of cases out there across the country between hemp, marijuana, the selective enforcement based on the jurisdiction.
Oh, I, I totally agree with you. I just want the council to be well aware that they are actively and openly violating the federal statute.
So under that, under that guise, any citizen who possesses it legally under Maryland law is violating a federal, federal statute? And I don't think you'll get an argument anywhere on that.
You just need to be aware of it.
Sure. No, I, and I think with that, with that being said, I think we do ourselves a fa- a, we reduce our risk by at least taking care of the corporate limits of Manchester. But I see your, I agree, I agree, your points are well taken.
Yeah, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. We're kind of damned if we do and damned if we don't, and we don't know which way the worst dam is going to be, quite frankly. I mean, it could be, it could potentially be a non-issue, maybe nobody ever wants to even try to come into Manchester in dispense because it's out in Westminster and they've limited the licenses to this point, but we don't know, we don't know.
But politics can be dirty and, you know, just don't, I just don't trust the feds, you know. Selective enforce, that's what they're doing, they're selectively picking and choosing. And Manchester could become a target, you know. We're very conservative up here and that could be a target.
Why isn't Westminster in the wrong then? Because they have the dispensaries. That's against federal.
I'm not worried about Westminster, I'm worried about Manchester.
But I don't know, I haven't talked any.
Actually, since Sally Sue can jump, you know, jump off the bridge, why don't you jump off the bridge?
Well, we share the attorney with, uh, Mount Airy, so that's kind of why it was both. The only thing I've ever heard of was, I know, right away, Ocean City denied any consumption areas. I don't know if they went any further than that, but they have outlawed that. So we're just looking for your guidance, what would you like to do?
Well, I'm, I'm, you know, more, I, I understand Chris's concerns very much, but I kind of side with Bob in the sense that if we don't do anything, I think we're leaving ourselves in a more vulnerable position than if we do, because like Bob said, push comes to shove, we can always rescind the, rescind the ordinance.
Would Tom be willing to write an opinion on this topic, you think?
He wrote it.
No, this, this newest question.
We certainly can.
Yeah, I don't think there's a problem if we send him that question.
Yeah.
I mean, this has been really.
Just ask him what our exposure might be, given that the federal law, it's still illegal under federal law.
It's selective enforcement, it's, it's, it's really it, I mean, supremacy clause in the Constitution. And I'm not a constitutional law scholar, but I did sleep at Holiday Inn Express last night.
That, that almost works. It, uh, yeah, I mean, you have the supremacy clause, but again, if you're going to hold it, if you're going to hold a town responsible for them trying to regulate it as opposed to the actual person who is violating the law, that's where I would like to get the opinion. All we're doing is regulating the business based on the state law. The town is in no way adding to, being part of, encouraging any of that sales distribution or manufacturer. So the question could be, how much risk do we, or legal risk do we take by saying, if you're going to do it based on the state law, this is where we want, this is where you're allowed to do it? Versus that shop owner who is doing the business when the, when the federal government comes in and says, okay, we're, we're taking somebody. You are the person violating the law as opposed to the town. So that's just one, one look at it?
Yeah, yeah, I, I can't, can't disagree with you, I just, I, I think more, more research needs to be done and pump the brakes a little bit, so. Be sure, be very, very sure.
I make motion to recommend approval with modifications as discussed today, including noting the concerns over the federal law versus the state's law and recommend additional due diligence from our legal counsel related specifically to that.
There's a motion on the floor, do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
And one other thing, that I forgot to mention earlier. I did want, I gave you guys copies of the accessory part of the code and the BL part of the code because we really need to review them since our business is kind of antiquated and needs to be updated as to what can go in different business locations. And our accessory use, we had talked about modifying the ground mounted solar with a little more definition. So there's a couple of things that we need to work on, whether you want to work on them and bring them back to here or we want to have a work session, whatever.
We talked about a work session the last time.
Okay.
We should look, get some dates together and I think it would probably benefit to have a work session to deal with that.
And not just on our ground solar, but on our solar farms ordinances, there's
Yes.
a couple of items that need to be clarified in that ordinance as well.
Yeah, we talked about that the last time, cleaning up a few of those new sands.
Okay, okay.
I see some people in the audience, do you have any business for the town or are you just observing? Okay, well, I'm sorry to disappoint you, we're not the council, so. Okay.
Michelle, just a reminder, because you'll be recording this in minutes, as the alternate with a full commission, I don't vote, so.
Okay. Having no other business, I take a motion for adjournment of the meeting.
I'll make a motion when you adjourn the meeting.
Have a second? Okay, all those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting's adjourned.